Tell her we're gonna hire her right now.
Hey, team. Hey, nice job. Thanks for everything helping us get set up. Appreciate it.
Are we ready?
Once Matt gives us the thumbs up.
I think he gave us the thumbs up.
Hey, Matt, can you confirm, are we live? Okay.
All right. Thank you for joining us this evening for our school board meeting. In order to begin our meeting, we'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, we're gonna have some sound in order to be heard on the livestream. We actually can't, for those who are here, we're just gonna try to project. But to be heard on the livestream, we're gonna need directors to speak into this mic right here. So when you are gonna speak, if you'll raise your hand, we'll bring the mic over to you so that they can hear it on the livestream. Those who are participating in public participation, the mic right here is live, and that will let those listening in be able to hear. So let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Director Patterson, can you lead us in that tonight? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, let's get started with the review of the agenda by Superintendent Corden.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Couple things tonight. First item you'll see on the agenda, we have two items that have been struck out tonight. The Phoenix administration will not be joining us tonight. Declined the invitation to come in person to present their check-in. We will get this work to get their check-in rescheduled. Item number two, no applications for the Budget Committee were received, so the budget will not need to consider an appointment for that committee tonight. And we have added a new item in red on your agenda, which is the CMGC at Fremont Middle School tonight.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and approve the consent agenda from our previous meeting on January 13th. The Chair will entertain a motion. All in favor of approving our consent agenda from January 13th, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, that agenda has been approved. The next item on our list is, on our agenda, is public participation. If you want to come and address the Board, we ask that you come to the microphone. And as we have this month, we're asking that you limit your comment to approximately two minutes. And Assistant Superintendent Ni will kind of flag you down when it's time for you to wrap up your thoughts. So I will open the floor to that. Okay, seeing no one jump up out of their chair enthusiastically, we will go ahead and move on to what is now item number two, approval of notice of intent to award for the Fremont Middle School Seismant Project. And that's gonna be Denny Austin.
With your permission, I'm going to drop this a little so that I don't steam up my glasses. So as I mentioned at the last board meeting, this is the final step in the public opportunities for the seismic upgrade at Fremont. We actually published this in Orpen on Christmas Eve, and still had over 71 vendors that received the information of that. Over 30 downloaded the information. We had the walkthrough on December 30th. That was a mandatory walkthrough for anyone who would provide a proposal. We had six firms attend regarding CMGC purposes. Project managers also attended that, but it was not mandatory for them. Of those that attended the walkthrough, two firms provided us with proposals before the deadline. Both firms, the district has worked with before, S&amp;B James and Vitus Construction. And after evaluations were completed, both firms scored quite well. But the high score went to SB James, who we've had very positive experience on projects that they have done for us in the past, including opportunities where the budget was well within the financial end of the budget. And so S&amp;B James was able to add value to the project by not having any money sent back to the grant, but doing additional projects within the school buildings. So the committee would recommend the contract be awarded to S&amp;B James. And then staff will go ahead and publish that notice of intent to award.
Thank you. So the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the notice of intent to award to S&amp;B James for the seismic project at Fremont Middle School. Okay, any discussion, questions? All right, ready to vote? All right, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay. That is done. Our next item agenda is the Board, what? We're good? The next item is the Board and Superintendent Goals, kind of a progress report. So I'm gonna turn the time over to Superintendent Corden.
Thank you very much. I thought it was appropriate to spend a few minutes tonight reviewing our Board and Superintendent Goals that we have developed and collectively voted on, that we're leaning into together. So tonight, we have a few updates for you, an opportunity for you to ask questions and get some more information relative to where we are in the process of the RHS Rose Transition. Give an update to the Board on graduation rates tonight, an update on the virtual school development. And also a few minutes on the reopening tonight, as well as a process proposal for the RHS mascot tonight. So we will turn that time over to Principal Jill Weber, Principal Randall Olson, to start us off on the RHS Rose Transition.
Directors, ladies and gentlemen of the Board, I appreciate the opportunity to shepherd this message. I know I'm speaking to folks that have heard this before, but as a representative for my stakeholders, I'm just really honored for this moment. Knowing we've got a lot of agenda items to get through, I want to be brief, provide the update. But I don't want to skip the opportunity to talk about the why. So for anybody in the audience who is listening digitally, is unaware of the reason why we're very excited to migrate Rose School into Roseburg High School, is what Superintendent Corden addressed already. Board goals, our strategic plan, the center of that is equitable student experiences. And a year ago, before the shutdown, we were, four thought leaders were engaging in some breakfast, having coffee, and talking about what did we think Roseburg could look like as a community 100 years from now? We talked about big picture, we talked about stepping outside of the box that education is in, and what did we want for our community? That conversation was interrupted with the shutdown. And for those that may think that the reason why we're migrating Rose School into Roseburg High School is because of the shutdown, that is not accurate. We're doing that because we believe in equity. And hopefully, as we continue to bring this message forward, that that message is seen for what it is, and that we care about our kids, all of them, all the same. So after we had that breakfast back in February, and then we shut down, we really came back in October. We got the whiteboard out, and we talked about our process. And I want to update everybody where we've been. We started with internal communication. Those were formal meetings that I led with Rose School to talk about where we're going. And Principal Weber shepherded that message at Roseburg High. The end of October, we were prepared and worked with the news review to have a message go out. So the first phase was we wanted to make sure that Roseburg High School and Rose School staff were aware before the message hit the press. After that, in November, we began expanding the internal communication to leadership team meetings and started to let our leaders across our fleet of buildings know where we've been, where we're going, and the why. At that time, sometime mid-November, Superintendent Corden, Assistant Superintendent Ni courageously came and opened the floor for Rose School and allowed just open communication with our personnel so they could have a rumbling as to the why, and to hear that not from my mouth, but from all of our mouths. And the message has continued to be the same and very consistent. Moving into December, we began to really fine tune the communications with the groups that needed to hear the message early and perhaps differently. I began meeting with my staff that are gonna be moving into Roseburg High School individually, introducing them to Principal Weber, and then quickly hopping out of the Zoom call to allow them to establish their own rapport, dynamic, and to begin to build trust. Feedback from my team, feedback from Principal Weber, those meetings were across the board a success. We've continued to effort to speak honestly, regardless of whether the message was complete or not. We aim to be kind in our communication. Near the end of December, again, more formal meetings, myself, Principal Weber, Chelsea Duncan, our communication specialist, began to meet with the parents that I've been meeting with along the way. So we sat down with the parents that I had been meeting with biweekly, and we had the opportunity for them to have a real voice. What came out of that was we scheduled interviews, and we were able to create and capture two interviews, one with myself, one with one of our Rose School parents talking about their fears, their concern, what they know about the message. And our aim is to have the most impacted families for the transition, that being the Rose families. If their voice, if we can make it right for them, the ones that came into Rose, that are coming into Roseburg High School, we know if we can make it right by them, then those are the people that are gonna help allow that message to enter the community. And that's where we stand right now. Once we broke in December, we had wrapped those meetings, and we know we have one more parent. We're trying to schedule a meeting with Chelsea. But we continue to meet regularly with families. This message, I have brought it to any family that I interact with, I show them the strategic plan. I show them Superintendent Corden's goals. I show them my goals. I let them know that we're all going this together, and the resources, the personnel that we connect with at Rose, when they know that we're all part of the same system, that message wins, and they feel good. There's a lot more to what we're gonna provide, and it's really exciting for me to be able to introduce the best person to communicate that message. But it really is the collective message that I believe in personally as a leader, that our district believes in. And it really was sort of the admitted chaos that was in my brain. All of the things that I have seen, that I know that our kids need at Rose, that our kids in Roseburg need across the board. When I saw the chaos in my brain end up on a beautiful flow chart, something that Principal Weber's gonna share tonight, I knew we're on the right track, because the message is consistent from the top to the bottom. The message is consistent with the people that have experienced the need. And it's a real, I'm glad I get to introduce Jill Weber to tell you where we are in this planning, because it makes sense. And when the students saw it, she was able to make that make sense where admittedly I failed. The same message that was in my brain, I couldn't capture it. And she found it, and as soon as she showed it to me, that was it. And I personally believe in where we're going, and it's my duty to help others believe as well. So I thank you for your time, and I'm happy to introduce Jill Weber.
So moving Rose to Roseburg High School is, it's an opportunity for us to continue to grow and to take some of the programs that are there and enhance what we currently do. But I also feel we have a lot of things in place at Roseburg High School that will support, that do support all students. And the Rose students will benefit by being there. So there's a flow chart in front of you that is green and red and yellow. And that flow chart is a way to kind of demonstrate where our vision of bringing Rose students to Roseburg High School and how that will work. When students come into Roseburg High School, even before they come to Roseburg High School, we work with the middle schools to gather data on the kids and see what supports they need. Our goal is for every student to complete some program and to have plans for what happens after high school. When they come in, we meet with the middle schools, we look at the data, we figure out what supports they need. And we have a lot of things in ninth grade that support them, smaller learning communities. We have a ninth grade success team that looks at data across the board with students and shifts that we can make. We have a graduation coach, an extra counselor, in-person summer school. We have a transition program and lots of other things that provide that support for that first year at Roseburg High School. Most of our students, actually above 90% of our students are on track at the end of that first year towards graduation. There are some students who need more, and we have plans in place to help support them and grow those plans as well with the, bringing Rose over to Roseburg High School. We have a continuing progress class in 10th grade for kids who need a little extra support in 10th grade. We also have more supports that can happen where there's some acceleration recovery if kids are behind with credits. That may be summer school, that may be within our program. There is a point where some students may decide that the high school and that traditional program isn't working, and a GED is an option. Up to this point, students have left Roseburg High School, gone to Rose, and had limited instruction and preparation for a GED. And this is one of the exciting opportunities that we have a vision for, what it could look like if it comes to Roseburg High School. We see that students with a GED is a very viable option for some students. But we also want plans after that. So in a short little part, I'll tell you what our vision is for the GED. We want students to be connected with other programs at the high school, find their passion. So it can be CTE programs, it can be music, it can be art, it could be lots of different opportunities and things that we have at the high school. We also want students, though, when they finish that GDED, they can earn credits through proficiency and still have the opportunity to earn a high school diploma. Sometimes it seems so far away, but by completing that GDED, they can say, "I think I can still do this," or "I'm enjoying this," or "I'm connected," or "I feel part of this," "I feel hope again," and can reach towards that high school diploma. Some will say, "I'm done. I've gotten what I need, and I'm ready for the workforce." By including them in our CTE programs or other opportunities, we're training them to be able to leave and go into the workforce directly from the high school. That will happen because we can move the GDED program into the high school. So that's some of the parts and the visions that we have for supporting kids. I could talk a lot of detail into this, but that's the vision, and that's the direction we're heading as we bring in Rose School into Roseburg High School, with the goal of reaching, ensuring that every kid leaves the high school finishing and with a plan for that next step. Does any questions for Randall and I based on those? Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
Okay, thank you very much. Jill, I think you're back up. You're too comfy yet. I will just mention one thing. I just want to publicly thank both Jill and Randall. Michelle's helped shepherd this, and I've been greatly a part of this. This is an example of when an organization has a belief that something's possible, and I want to commend the Board. You know, we have an unapologetic, unrelenting focus on doing things that work for kids and making sure that success doesn't depend on your socioeconomic, the color of your skin, the zip code, where you live. And I think, I just want to commend people who've been involved in this process. Oftentimes, these are scary steps to take when you think about undoing something and creating something new. But this is an example of taking a look at academic return on investment and the things that we're doing focused on a strategic plan. So thank you very much for that.
All right, graduation rates, super excited to share with you that last year, 86.1% of our graduates graduated on time. That is over or about just under a 10% increase from the previous year. This is the highest graduation rate that we've had. And it isn't because of what happened last year. It isn't because of one thing that we've done, but it's because a lot of years of focus on supporting kids through this process. I'm equally as excited to share with you, our dropout rate was 0.64%. And that's because we care about kids, because we connect with kids, and we don't let kids disconnect from us. We make sure that they know that we care about them and we hold on to them. As I shared with you earlier, before kids even come to Roseburg High School, we work with the middle schools to ensure that we know data about these kids. We know what supports they need, who needs supports before they come to us. We wrap our arms around them, we support them, and we believe in them. This graduating class from last year, at the end of their freshman year, 85% were on track. We knew the correlation between how they do their freshman year and where they are at graduation. We continued watching them and supporting them through the four years at Roseburg High School. Because graduation doesn't happen in one year. Graduation happens in four years, 24 credits, lots of high-level achievement. And these kids did that. Our community, our school, our families, our kids should be very proud of where we are with this graduation rate. Roseburg High School set a goal of 85% graduation rate about three years ago, and we've achieved that. The seniors this year started 90% on track. We have a system in place for people who believe that it's possible, and this can be done. We, on a regular basis, could have more than 90% of our students graduating on time in our community. And it's because people believe, and they support, and they care. When you set high expectations for kids, they will achieve those. And if they know that we care, and we won't let them fail, that will happen. The climate and culture of our school is set, so that doesn't occur. We do all we can to support them through that process. Our connections, our clubs, our activities, our sports, our engagement, our instructional practices all support this happening. It's a system that wraps our arms around kids to reach the 86%. So I'm just very proud of the school and the work that's been done, and I think our whole community should feel the same.
That's amazing. Thank you.
Thank you. And thanks. We've got a high school team here, and congratulations to everybody, Randall and Jill. And I think, again, to me, it shows the great work at the high school, and it can't be the high school that shoulders alone the graduation process. That's something that we're working on from pre-K to 12, so that's exciting. So thank you. Okay, Assistant Superintendent Ni?
Our goal, K-12, for our creating a virtual school is to recapture the students who have left our district for other options, as well as to offer choice and equitable learning experiences for our current students. Currently, we have 273 K-5 students participating in our remote learning option, plus another 126 K-5 students who have left our district for various virtual charter schools. In addition, there are 152 sixth through 12th grade students who have left our district for other virtual options. We've been doing research and communicating with other districts who have virtual schools. And based on that information that we've gathered, we are moving forward with a K-5 standalone virtual school utilizing a learning platform and Roseburg teachers. For sixth through 12th grade, for the 21-22 school year, we're gonna offer a virtual option that keeps the students connected to our middle schools and RHS, but will utilize Apex Learning for the courses. Since the K-5 virtual option will be a separate school, we have to request an institution ID from ODE, which requires we have a name for the virtual school. So Policy FF, which all of you have become very familiar with, addresses the naming of facilities. This technically is not a facility, because it's a virtual school. But we still wanted to ask for your input on a name choice for our K-5 virtual school. We're looking at two options. We're looking at RPS Virtual School and RPS Virtual Academy. So I just would like to ask if any of our directors have a preference on the name.
I was kind of hoping maybe we could name it something like Sonic Virtual School or Delta. Maybe Half Man for some older parents. I'm just teasing, but either one of those are fine. We can always change it. RPS Virtual School?
You like? I think RPS Virtual School. Do we need to vote?
No.
No? Okay.
Are there any questions about RPS Virtual School and where we're at right now?
So when you say that kids are gonna be still tied to the middle school or the high school, but their courses are not gonna be taught by Roseburg teachers, they're through Apex, is that what you said?
Right. So for the 21-22 school year, we'll be utilizing Apex Learning and Apex teachers. We will have mentors from the high school that'll still be attached to our students to provide them guidance through that process. And then in the 22-23 school year, we'll transition to still utilizing Apex Learning Platform, but using Roseburg teachers.
Okay. And I think I know this from personal experience, but just clarify, for those who might not know this, that students that are enrolled in our Virtual Academy can still participate in extracurricular activities at their assigned institutions, right?
Correct.
So a kid can do their courses online, but come and be in the school musical.
Correct.
What are, are you going to allow kids to do partial? Like, do they have to choose entirely online or entirely in person?
For the first year, yes.
Okay.
And then as we move forward to see where we are with enrollment and working with Principal Weber and RHS, we will look at other options.
And this will, that will be, I would just say, also applicable to middle school levels, too.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I have lots of questions.
Who's in charge of this virtual school? I'm assuming that someone that's not added to your list of responsibilities, nor Jared's list of responsibilities, who's in charge of it to make sure it takes off the way it should and maintains itself the way it should?
Then Director Bishop, when you're done with Assistant Superintendent Ni.
So currently, for our elementary virtual school, Danny Jardine is the supervising administrator. She will be over the K-8 program for next year, for virtual programs. So we will have a supervising administrator. And then for ninth through 12th grade, working with RHS to have one of their administrators be over that. One of their assistant principals would be supervising that program.
That's adding more to Danny's plate and more to an assistant in high school. For one year.
Yes.
After which you will take notice as to whether or not the program is growing or needs to be, and then someone will be in charge of that, take it away, the responsibility away, I'm hoping, from high school to Danny.
Well, we want it still integrated with the high school and still connected with the high school moving forward, but we'll just need to look at how it grows and where we are with enrollment, and then we can make adjustments moving forward.
There's my experience that there are tools in the district office that are overburdened. And there are many people at the high school and the middle schools that are also overburdened, and I want to make sure that that doesn't happen. Because, I mean, let's be practical about this, when that happens, the kids lose out, too. So we want to make sure that that's taken care of and that personnel is, yeah, just a concern.
And then Director Bishop had some questions.
My only other question is, is there a plan to reach out to those individuals that have left for other charter schools or other online formats to try and glean those that are willing to come back to the Roseburg Public Virtual School?
Matt, you're doing a great job.
Good job. Keep it up.
I'm getting feedback from some people in the public saying that they need us to speak up a little louder to hear the full livestream. Just want to remind everybody. Thank you.
You're welcome. We are currently working with our communication specialist, Chelsea Duncan, on a marketing campaign for our virtual school and making connections with the families that have left our district for other options.
Yeah, and Director Bishop, I would say to that, there's, you know, we really are looking at that idea of retain the kiddos we have right now, the 250 that are currently K-5 remote that we have with our own staff. And then really, so that's goal number one. And then, really, so that's goal number one, and then we really will be in this recapturing with, what's the number?
Almost 300.
100, and how many do we have that are virtually have left?
126 K-5 and 152 612.
And then, you know, there's, the question may come to, because I know that our school district is not alone in not having a virtual option, and really in the county, the numbers are up virtually too. So I think we'll have to think about capacity, but I think this is certainly a way to keep our kids. I think our families will want to be here, I believe that, connected in our community with our staff. So we're working to get a pretty aggressive campaign out there to make sure that they know that this is available and what it can do.
I just worry that those individuals who are now out will not come back if they don't know about it.
Yep.
And with that, is it funding and counseling affecting that?
Yep, yep. We are actively working to market the why behind this and to say, "Come and see." Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. All right, and thanks for all the work that's gone in there. To your question, Director Hall, you know, who else is working on this? It is, you know, Michelle's taking a lion's share of this work amongst other duties to really help us craft a, you know, another option that's pretty complex as we think about how to, you know, we think about accreditation and how to provide those options and what folks need, and your point is well-taken on infrastructure there. All right, I want to spend just a few minutes talking about our reopening to the board and answer any questions that I can. We've had a great start welcoming our K-5 students back this week. We've had a chance as a cabinet group to be out in all of our buildings, and we really have seen kids that are just thrilled to be back. And our kids are just so darn, they're sweet and they're easy and they're thrilled and they're wearing masks, and it's almost like with all of the, you know, safety precautions and distancing and sanitation, it's almost like that doesn't exist for our kids. They just are thrilled to be back. And our four or five students, the first time they've been back in our buildings for instruction was Monday. It was great to see those four or five kids. Really thrilled that the experience they've had and how our staff has done a super job, incredible job preparing to meet the needs of these kids, and they have opened their arms in their classrooms and done a super job. Our parents are thrilled and just kudos to our staff and our parents and our kids for having a successful start. We were able to, as you know, have a four or five option for families that weren't comfortable yet coming back. We have about 15% of our families K-5 who have chosen to remain remote, and we were grateful to be able to provide that option for those families. So we are, this Monday, as you are aware, you know, we've had, and I want to thank the board for your experience and leadership and staying the course when sometimes it was uncomfortable around following the metrics. I'll say this again, our belief as a school district and as a board collectively has been we need to do what's right for our community's health, the safety of our kids, and the safety of our staff. It's been a little bit uncomfortable at times because we've continued to follow that message. Others around us have made different decisions, that's up to them. It's been a little isolating at times that we haven't opened, but I want to thank you for your consistency with that. And Monday, we received word that we have, the metrics have gotten to a spot that do allow us to open K-5, and again, this Monday, we heard allow us to open 612. So we're planning on opening up 612 on Monday. I want you to know that we're ready for this. The staff have the technology, the training, the expertise they need to make this option a success. As you know, we will be in in-person hybrid options as well as a remote option on Monday. And we're excited to welcome our kids back. And again, we want to thank our 612 staff for preparing for this. We've been ready to do this, and we're ready Monday to have a successful start. Happy to answer any questions the board may have about our reopening plan or, yes?
What percentage of 612 have left to stay remote?
Yeah, so it's a great question. So the question for those on the livestream that couldn't hear, Director Bishop asked what percentage of our students are remaining to stay remote? So about 15% K-5 at the middle school right now, and these numbers are still coming in, we're about 20% of students in our 6th through 8th schools, Jolene and Fremont. Roughly 20% to 25% at the high school. It's, and maybe Jill can, if she wants to correct me on this, we have oftentimes multiple submissions by the same family, and sometimes the data gets a little bit skewed that way. I think as of today, the graph we had had about 1,500 responses, 1,432, but there were about 400 of those that were multiple entries. And so it looks like we're probably going to be, I think, Jill, around 25%, I think is the number it looks like, at least on.
So we got close to 1,100 without the individuals responding, so that's only 500 of those who have responded, and about 300 are saying that they were staying remote. So if you look at just that percentage, it's hard to say that about 500 of them responded.
Yeah. Right now, it appears to be about a quarter of those students.
And the default is if they don't respond, you're assuming they will return to a hybrid situation?
Yes, and then we'll see on Monday and Tuesday, and then from there we'll respond if they didn't show up and make phone calls and connect and try to figure out what, how to work with that.
Yeah.
And that response survey was supposed to be done today, is that correct?
Today was the day it wasn't done, yes. And it was given out before, last Wednesday we asked for it back, and then we sent 11 12 families that didn't respond.
Yeah. So as a reminder, I think the board knows this, but how this will work is the students will be in an assigned cohort, whether you're in person or not. So even in the remote option, you're still assigned a cohort A or B, and what will happen is a teacher, let's say a teacher has 36 kids, normally about half of those students that will be with them on the A day, about half on the B day. And even if you're a remote student in the A group, you'll come, we have webcams and TVs in the classroom, so those students will still be part of that cohort. And so what that allows us to do is provide that consistency as we've got the semester started, that they have the same teachers and the same class and the same cohort. It's not exactly the option that Michelle's talked about, Assistant Superintendent E. It's not really, this wasn't really the vision of what virtual would look like in the future, but for this year, the plan was this is how we were going to address it for this year. So any questions we can answer about reopening?
For the kid in the cohort, where each day that half of the kids, at least in theory, are present, and the other half are at home participating. And our teachers have mastered that ability to teach both people that are present and people that are virtual. And if people choose to remain virtual, they'll still stay in their same cohort, it's just they'll be at home.
That's correct. Yeah, the only clarification on that is we're really not, so what we wanted to be clear about is we wanted to make sure staff, it's, what we want is when students are in that cohort present, that's, we want the best teaching with those kids. So we've invited the other group to participate. It's optional, we'd encourage that connection, but the kids on the day they're not at school are involved in more asynchronous learning. We've got a learning management system with Canvas, there's work those kids can be doing. We've been working on the idea of a flipped classroom, which you see kind of at the college level, where you're doing some of the thinking and work beforehand, so when you get there, you're really diving into that deep learning. So it's not an expectation this year that staff will have to be managing the B group at the same time they're managing the A group. Because it's not really, that's kind of, it's a hard ask of teachers to say, "Take care of this class and also take care of this remote class." However, that being said, they will have students in that same group that they'll be focusing on that are going to be remote in, say, the A classroom. So it could look like I've got 14 kids with me today and three joining me remotely, and that's my group.
I'll understand it someday.
All right. Any other questions about reopening? All right, I'm going to go ahead and stand up and turn this computer on. I'm going to share a quick presentation. Matt, I don't know if that is going to pop open for us or not.
While he's getting that ready, I just want to remind everyone to try to hold off until the mic is with you so that those on the livestream can hear.
All right, so you might have to cream your neck a little bit potentially to see this tonight. Does it warm up? Hey, there we go. Okay. So tonight, I want to spend a few minutes with the board tonight discussing a proposal for a process relative to the RHS mascot. I'll step out of the way and stand up here. This comes from suggestions from the board, and thank you for those who have reached out to me with questions that you wanted answers and some process questions you had or just general questions. So I'm happy to discuss or answer any questions as we go through this. This is a relatively short proposal for you tonight. So the outcome of this tonight is to really consider a process that we could embrace, the board would embrace, to determine the next steps moving forward relative to the mascot. So what I want to present to you tonight is a two-phased process. So the first phase of this process would involve information gathering, and this information gathering could result in the board voting to respectfully retire the RHS mascot. But this first phase would involve these three steps. It would involve a board subcommittee that would lead the information gathering process. This would be everything from how to survey, who to survey, questions asked, and take care of that first step. The subcommittee would share this information with the board, and then if the board does elect to respectfully retire the mascot, it would move on to this second phase. There could be some steps that were repetitive between one and two if the board had additional questions that needed answered or survey information, so this is intended to be relatively linear, but could cycle back if the board felt they needed more information than that first process. But I'm thinking it's likely that the board subcommittee would be interfacing with the board and making sure they have the right information. The second phase of this process would be either to maintain that board subcommittee or have a different subcommittee and/or a transition committee if a decision's made to respectfully retire the RHS mascot. And what this group would do is kind of oversee three key areas that would need to be deliberate and intentional moving forward, and that would be to determine, you know, what the selection process for a new mascot would look like, and there's lots of work that can go into there. I have some examples at the last slide. We won't go in those tonight, but they're there for you. To consider some timeline options and also to oversee logistics and potential cost considerations. I've heard from a couple board members that costs really, you know, for some, people want to make sure this isn't an impediment to a decision, but there will be some logistical considerations if the board does move forward on a mascot. One consideration that comes to mind would be, for example, athletic uniforms or, you know, activity uniforms, for example, so those considerations. So with that in mind, I would be happy to entertain any questions. This is just a proposal. If the board wants to move forward with this, then what I would do is suggest, I'll turn it over to Madam Chair Larson to talk about a board subcommittee if this seems like a process the board would be okay with moving forward. So any questions from board members?
My question, Charles.
Charles is the guest.
I was happy to hear what Nikki has to say. The board subcommittee, I think right now that some of us on the board have fairly strong opinions which vary from other members of the board, which would seem to me that either we've got to find a board subcommittee that includes several different sides of the controversy, or we've got to have a subcommittee made up of people that really are, what's the nice word, who really haven't thought about this issue yet. And that's a trick, it's just how you're going to make a subcommittee that's going to work.
So I asked at the previous meeting who was interested in doing that, and so I did get responses to form that subcommittee, so I have those names. I mean, is now the time to share that or? So the people who, the directors who contacted me were Director Hall, Director Johnson, and Director Cotton, with Director Bishop as the alternate. We have to, you know, keep that subcommittee to three so that we don't have a core, but that's who reached out to me with interest in helping with this process. I think a lot of, I think it's important that we make sure it's a process that not only the board members are comfortable with, but that the community is comfortable with. I think that, I think they're interested in making sure that this is a decision that's made, not just the right decision being made, but also that it's made in the right way, if that makes sense.
And I guess in this design, and I may not have explained this clear enough, but the subcommittee will be interfacing with the board, obviously, so it would be, I think, you know, I think there's, if there are things that the board wants to know, the board subcommittee would be heading up this information gathering process. I don't think it is absent from the board's.
Right.
Input.
Which is something that Director, that Reverend Johnson's also pointed out in the past, that there needs to be really good communication back and forth between the board as a whole and the work that a subcommittee is doing, but it just would allow them to dig a little deeper, I guess, into this issue and help really develop that process.
Thank you for that explanation.
Does that help?
Time will tell.
Time will tell.
My concerns went, after I looked at the slides, were two things that I wrote down, and one was the phases. You know, there are two phases to this, but actually, so I guess I didn't quite understand how the phases work. You kind of explained that a little bit more tonight. And my second one was, there should be, it seems to me like there should be a timeline or some deadline set for when this gets to be done, and these aren't done on the slides because we all know that it's kind of human nature to procrastinate, not everybody, but especially when everybody else is working, you know, I can do whatever because I'm useless right now for, you know, regular practical things in the world. So I think a timeline is important or a deadline for when the subcommittee would meet, explain things to the board, the board decides whether or not they're going to vote on it or they need more information. And the same with phase two, there need to be deadlines for this. That's practical consideration. I see people shaking their head, yes, so.
Yeah, no, I think, I agree, and I would hope that, I would hope that the subcommittee would get to work soon and start having those conversations because I, that's part of the whole process, right? Part of the process is saying, what should the timeline look like? You know, I think that's an important part of this, that we need to make sure that that conversation happens in a thoughtful way. And I, yeah, I can't say it enough, that I think that there is a right decision to be made, but that decision also has to be done the right way. I actually was really impressed with some of the things that Principal Olson shared when he talked about this transition with Rose School into RHS, and that you have some stakeholders who need to be heard, that need to talk through things, that need to have concerns addressed, and I really love how thoughtfully both he and Principal Weber have gone through that process because change can be traumatic for a community, which doesn't mean the change doesn't need to happen, but it does mean that there is a right way to go about it. And I really appreciated that, and I feel like that was a great example of kind of what we're envisioning with this subcommittee process, is setting up this process where we have some people who can help us with timelines, who can help us with what do we need to do? Let's really dig in deep and make a plan that's going to work for our whole community.
Yeah, and our office stands ready to help in any way we can. If that's, you know, development of surveys to help out or to think about, you know, any supports we need, we stand ready to support the board, of course, in any way we can.
So I have a question.
Yep.
Is this, this whole timeline issue, is this something that's going to be talked about at the next meeting, or is this something that's going to be talked about, a subcommittee report from those individuals at the next meeting, or is this something that's going to be? Or is this something that's going to be in the next month? I'm just, I'm curious.
I mean, my perspective is that, I mean, my thought would be that the subcommittee would be meeting hopefully in the next month and get the ball rolling. I mean, they need to have, they need to start having a conversation and setting up timelines. And I think this is, I think we've agreed, I feel like we left that last meeting with an agreement, that this is a ball that we have started rolling down the mountainside, and we need to continue on with that process.
Okay. I just think fiscally, that's just the way my mind works. And, you know, there is a deadline or a timetable that seems to be better in my mind than others if something is going to change. And that would be the end of the school year, beginning of the next school year. We are now in January, next month is February. There's not a ton of time for community input, but I think community input is essential, 100%. I just want there to be enough time for that input.
Yeah.
Yeah, point well taken. And I think the two-phased approach really gets down to the fact that, you know, there need to be, if there's going to be a vote, the first vote will be about the mascot being respectfully retired. That's the first vote. It's not about what the mascot will be. And so, there's these two iterative processes, right, that will happen. So, and I think that, you know, I had some things to share with you tonight. It was kind of in the weeds a little bit about some potential timelines and what things could look like. I think that's really the work of the subcommittees to get moving on. You know, in the event that the mascot does change, there's some, there are some significant, depending on, you know, what the mascot was and, you know, there are some, there are logistics that would need to come into play, and a plan would need to come into play in terms of a transition. We talked about just one thing being, you know, athletic gear, for example. But there's many other things that would probably need to come into place there. So, I think that, again, becomes the work, potentially in that second phase, of a transition team that may be much broader than a board subcommittee. I see that being a wide group of stakeholders.
That's going to, I think that needs to be a stakeholder. A transition committee, in my opinion, would include things like our athletic director. It would include leadership kids from the high school. I think that's the kind of thing that we're going to need, a very broad community group that's helping us move forward with what is the new mascot, what, you know, when are we unveiling it? How, you know, that's going to be a bigger team.
Okay. Thank you.
But I would say, to answer the question, I foresee, we meet February 13th, I believe, is our next meeting. I would, I would foresee, not to speak for the board, but a board subcommittee update for the board at the next board meeting, I would hope.
I would love that.
Yep. Any other questions I can answer?
Any other thoughts, comments? I feel like I'm talking a lot out of, because I'm mic'd and I know that people can hear me, so I feel like I don't want to be putting words in your mouth as I move forward, but I'm trying to just make sure we're communicating clearly. Superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you. I'll try to be brief tonight, but I want to start by expressing my appreciation to the board. I cannot tell you how grateful I am for the opportunity to work with a board that understands what leadership is, that is consistent, that stays the course, that focuses on the things that matter most. Your leadership and expertise is so important and has been as we've really moved throughout this year where lots of things have changed. So, I, as it's Board Appreciation Month, I hope that you know that as a community, we so value the volunteer work, the important, critical volunteer work each of you do. Thank you for that. I know each of you are busy. Thank you for dedicating your time to help our kids and our staff move forward. It means a lot. Also, want to thank our ops team who's helped us be here tonight, the high school for helping us open the building tonight to do that, and Matt and helping with the live stream tonight. Just a couple of quick updates for you. Vaccinations have been on our mind quite a bit with the opening of school. There's questions about, you know, vaccinations and when that's going to happen. There will be a vaccination clinic for staff that will help, that will happen at the fairgrounds this weekend on Saturday. There's anticipated to be about 800 doses. There was an Eventbrite sign-up that opened up at 5:00. I don't know how quickly it filled. And there should be another event the following Saturday. I don't know if that one B group that includes educators has widened out. It's widened out to more than just our teachers and school staff. We're very hopeful that we can get teachers vaccinated who want to get vaccinated. I'm also continuing to advocate that Douglas County receive the vaccines that they are due. We have not received vaccines as far as I'm concerned at a rate we should receive them. It has not been commensurate with other counties. And we're continuing to work with some of our state representatives to turn that tide. I don't know why vaccines have been so hard to come by in Douglas County, but unfortunately they have, and we hope that we'll receive the vaccines that staff need. One of the thing, my annual reflection will be coming soon. Expect that by February as we, as you move into the process of my annual evaluation. Expect that by about mid-month. So, I'm looking forward to putting that together regarding our board and superintendent goals. And then, lastly, I just want to publicly thank our staff, our parents, our kids for, we've used the word grace a lot, patience a lot, and I really appreciate how this community has rallied around supporting our kids. We've had kids that have really, disclosure's been really tough on. Gosh, I almost tear up when I think about some of the things our kids have had to endure. It's been hard for our kids. It's been hard for our staff is they've had, we've asked a lot of them to be humble enough to be a first-year teacher again and figure everything out again. But we have persisted and we have supported. We have, I think, done a really good job of coming together as an organization instead of pulling apart as an organization. And it does take a collective effort. I think that starts with the board who trusts in this. And just a tremendous amount of respect for our community that's done a great job and staying the course and figuring out how they're going to, you know, change employment and stay home with their kids and all those things that have gone into this year. I'm super proud to work with great people. So, thank you.
Thank you. Individual reports. I'll try to go easy on you, Matt. So, we'll start with Director Bishop and work our way around the table.
All right. First of all, I'd like to thank educators and staff for their input, patience, and even their tenacity as we finished one semester and we've begun another, and as we face the challenges of returning, you know, K through 5 this week and next week, 6 through 12. I look forward to that. I'm also thankful for those that helped the vaccination clinic come to fruition and anticipating a great turnout.
Nothing to benefit the children or the district.
Thank you, sir. Director Lee.
I think I'll pass as well. We can all see the issues in the community, but we'll see how things work out.
Well, I wanted to say it was really cool to see the yellow school buses on Monday. I mean, it's been a long time since they've come up and down my street. And they were a little rusty. A lot of smoke coming out of the back ends of them, but it's really cool to see the buses. I am very confident that the subcommittee on the mascot, we will get right to work. And we'll have a great report in February. And I mean, we can stay tonight and start tonight, right, Mickey Howard? So, I don't think it's going to take that long. I think this will be pretty smooth sailing because I think the board is committed to listening to the community and the comments and making a great decision.
Thank you. Director Patterson.
Well, I just, I just want to take an opportunity to say that and thank the leadership, both at the administration. Think, boy, the last year and continuing has been one thing after another to deal with, and the way that the administration, the school leaders and the buildings and staff have taken on those challenges and it's just been, has been inspiring. It's been really nice to see. And I know that not everybody in the community gets to see that, which brings, of course, you know, other opinions out there, but I guarantee you that nobody wants those kids back in the buildings more than all the people in this room. So, I hope that everything goes smooth, and I appreciate all the hard work in order to get them back.
I want to just double down on what Jared said about thanking everyone for this facility, even though whoever did this didn't set me by Charles, and that kind of upsets me. Yeah. I want to also thank everyone in the community, not just the community outside of the schools, the parents and, but also teachers, teaching assistants, anyone that has contacted us and given us their opinion. I think that shows courage on their part. I think that it shows bravery, and I think it shows an interest in the schools. And I'm hoping that interest continues all the way through to a bond levy. One of the things that you read online about COVID and what we've gone through in this last year is communication. Communication is broken down here, and communication is broken down there, and families, the communication is broken down. We are in a freaking pandemic. Of course, communication is broken down. But hopefully, all of us have used these tough times to not only get better at what we do, but to get better at how we treat others. And that's just a little food for thought.
It has been a challenging month to be on the school board, I think. We've, we've had to wrestle with a lot. I feel like our whole school community, at my house, my kids love the Calvin and Hobbes cartoons. And I feel like all of our teachers and administrators have had to play Calvin ball for the last year, where they figure out the game and all of a sudden the rules change. And that happened to even us with our reopening plans. We made a plan and then the rules changed, and we had to restart over. And I am grateful for everyone who has stayed in the game. I have thought a lot over the last month about a children's book that I've read to students through the years about seven mice who come upon an object, and they don't know what it is. And they take turns going out to explore this object. And they go one at a time, and they each come back with a different truth. Some of them, one of them goes out and feels something that feels like a fan, and one of them goes out and feels a pillar, and one of them goes out and feels something that feels like a rope. And they come back, and they're adamant in their truth, and their truth is not wrong. However, their truths are incomplete until the seventh mouse goes out and runs the object up and down and back and forth and explores the whole thing and determines that it does have pointy parts and pillar parts and rope parts and fan parts and that it is an elephant. And our job on the school board is to be that last mouse. And that has felt weighty to me this last month, as we have had to take a lot of people's truths and try to step back and consider what's best for staff, what's best for kids, what's best for parents, what's best for our greater community, what's best for our schools 10 years from now. And it makes those decisions hard sometimes. But I want you to know, I have been so impressed by, it's Board Appreciation Month, and I guess this is my way of expressing my appreciation to my fellow board members for teaching me the value in taking the time to examine everyone's truths and to then step back and thoughtfully consider all of those truths to get the whole picture. And these are thoughtful men and women who volunteer hours and hours to do that for our community, and I am honored to serve with them. That is all I have for this evening on our agenda. So, there is one more time for public participation. So, if anyone would like to come forward and speak at the microphone, you may do so. I'll just remind you that Assistant Superintendent Nie will cut you off after, well, not cut you off, but she'll remind you when your two minutes are up so that you can summarize and wrap up.
I'm just gonna, I'm not participating in public comment. I just want to turn this off so it doesn't blind you here.
That's all right. Come to this microphone over here so they can hear you on the live stream. Thank you.
Is it okay if I take this off?
Yeah.
Hi, my name is Crissette. I'm Kanyankehaga, also known as Mohawk, and our family comes from Kanawaki. I'm here as a multicultural parent of a student and auntie of a future student. I want to acknowledge Howard Johnson for being the only member to show solidarity and our liberation is tied. [speaking indig] I also want to thank the hard work of indigenous people who have resisted and paved the way for the decision of the resolution requiring that racist mascots be changed and all the people whose voices aren't heard or respected. Since that didn't happen, I'm here tonight rather than making food for my family. I realize that we all want the best for our kids, but we are operating off of different information. The loophole that individuals from a local tribe said we could, that reminds me of that one time, y'all might remember, when you came over here and you said, hey, can we have that land that you've been on for time immemorial? Hey, can we take your children to these boarding schools? 30 to 60% of those children would never be seen again. And anyway, we know what's best for you, right? And then, to have the audacity to even think to approach the tribe and ask for permission to keep the name when the resounding message from indigenous people is that we don't want to be mascots. So, we want to be honored by having real history taught. We want land back. We want our languages and cultures preserved. And no one can tell me that the mascot name is respectful. This is white supremacy. There is a lot in a name. It's powerful. The name Roseburg, named after, I'm going to finish, Aaron Rose who got free land from the Oregon Land Donation Project, Douglas County, Joe Lane, Fremont, all white supremacists. Oregon, a white utopia with black exclusion laws, still on the Constitution until 2002. So, you guys don't have a great track record of being respectful, quite the opposite, in fact. And this is a historical time. I hope and expect y'all to do the right thing and be on the right side of history and to respect native people. I just have a quick question. Will there be indigenous representation on the subcommittee? And since you're out of compliance with the Oregon Department of Education's 2017 decision, any time now would be great. Looks like it could be a quite lengthy process. Thank you. [speaking indig] And I apologize, I kind of came here assuming that there would be like an antagonistic reception to my words, so they maybe sounded a little harsh, but I also think that it's important to hear. I didn't want to be here. I don't want to have to be here and come into these meetings, but I apologize if you all already are at a place that I assumed that you weren't.
Hello, everyone. My name is Callie Albertis, and I am an RHS alum of Class of 2016 and a member of the Krug Tribe of California. I used to be avidly against changing the name in high school, not understanding what harm it was doing as I couldn't see beyond the sentimentality and tradition that I attached so heavily to the name. But through my own education and research, I have found the highest regard of honor extends far past that of a mascot. A mascot by definition from Google, a person or thing that is supposed to bring good luck or that is used to symbolize a particular event or organization. or that is used to symbolize a particular event or organization. The example used, the squadron's mascot was a young lion cub. We are not a person or thing. We are this nation's first people, a culture, an ethnicity, a sovereign nation, and less than 1% of this population. Centrals stereotypes exist because of being associated to mascots such as ours. We are still thought to only have lived in teepees, a sculpture that existed on this very campus years ago. It is the very reason that my sister, just as much Native as I am, but who has fairer skin and lighter eyes, is questioned when she claims her Native identity. We are more than a feather, a name, a chief, a brown person, a warrior. We are leaders, we are people, we are women, we are successful, we are college graduates, and we deserve to be taken seriously. I pray that you can understand my perspective and do anything in your power to start a new legacy for RHS, one that won't be tainted with ignorance in years to come. I appreciate Superintendent Corden, your plan, and subcommittees in possibly respectfully retiring this mascot, and I really appreciated everything that you all had to say tonight and for listening to me speak. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jose Ramirez, and I am reading this on behalf of Jessica Bascom. She could not make it here tonight. Hi, my name is Jessica Bascom. I'm an enrolled member of the Clamath Tribe. I also have Creek and Cherokee heritage. This meeting today, taking place on the traditional lands of the Cow Creek Band of Umquah Tribe of Indians. I am a 2002 Roseburg High School graduate and the creator of the online petition asking you, Roseburg, to drop the Indian mascot. Am I the only one who thinks this change is necessary? No. Over 5,800 other people have signed my petition. At your last high school board meeting, Charles Lee said that he feels hostile to this change, and spoke about how he doesn't value the studies, which proves this to be harmful. He also dismissed lived experience as being a valid reason for the change. This filled me with rage. Why? Because a white male does not have the authority to tell me, as an Indigenous woman of color, whether my experience is real or not. I don't need his validation to know my painful experiences with racism, or his permission to believe in scientific data. The mascot in question is not called Caucasians, it's called Indians. And as someone with Indian identity, I think my opinion on this matter should hold more weight. Also, he seemed confused by how a feather could be offensive. It's important to remember that people aren't cheering for the Roseburg feathers at sporting events. They are cheering for the Roseburg Indians. Visually, you switch to a feather, yes, but your mascot is still the Indians, which means it's still racist. There are 36 high schools in the U.S. that dropped their Native mascots to two in 2020. Of those, 12 specifically used Indians. This is a good reminder that this change can be made even during a pandemic. The time is always now to do the right thing. Every minute you delay making this important change, I feel blatantly disrespected. Thank you for your time and for listening to this message. She couldn't make it here tonight, but I hope you can consider her point of view and think about what would be the right thing to do. So, thank you.
It appears that our public participation is completed. Thank you for joining us this evening. We'll now adjourn. Our next meeting will be on February 10th at 6:00 P.M. Thank you.
Gavel? No gavel?
No gavel.
Come here, please.
I'm not a gavel girl.
Please.